It's 6 o'clock, March 20th, 2020. I call the word of the City of Kennedy City Council's Emergency Council Meeting. A quorum is present. Amanda, will you please call roll?
Counselor Breonis?
Present.
Counselor Winn?
Here.
Counselor Science?
Here.
Counselor Collins?
Here.
Counselor Meyer?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Leslie, would you say a prayer, please?
For Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here today, and we ask that you would continue to watch over us and continue to help us make good decisions to move forward in our city and our community, and remind us that you're in control and fear is not of you. All this we ask in your son's name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never tending justice for all.
Anyone sign up for citizen comment?
Yes, sir. Joe Baker.
Joe Baker. Good evening, council members, mayor, city manager, city secretary. I found out about this meeting just after I got off work about 4:30. My first question to you, and I know it's your option to answer or not to answer, is who requested that the item be placed on the agenda? The item I'm referring to is postponing the election. Would you mind caring to respond to who it was that requested the item be placed on the agenda? Okay, moving on. The reason I ask that question is because where there's one candidate sitting behind that table, actually, there's three candidates sitting behind, well, I'm sorry, two candidates sitting behind the table, and I just think it would have been nice to get an email. Each candidate that filed for a place on the ballot included their email address, or I assume they did, since their campaigns are going to be impacted by this either way, whichever way the council chooses. I think it would have been fair, it would have been nice to just say, hey, heads up, we put up a 24-hour notice about an emergency meeting. We told everybody that there wouldn't be any city council meetings until the next month, and now we're reversing course on that. I think it would have been only fair and right to let every candidate know. Obviously, maybe some of the candidates knew and some didn't. That doesn't seem fair to me. My position on this is simple. I don't think the city should do this. I don't think the city should postpone the election. That should come from the governor. Lots of cities in the state of Texas holding May elections, and the governor has the authority to change that. I don't believe the council has the authority. I'm not an attorney. I'm surprised that there's no attorney here, considering what's on the agenda. But I think the right thing to do is postpone this decision and see what the governor decides. Obviously, this is going to be brought up at some point in time. I haven't seen any other cities do this at this point. Maybe I'll get some new information on that tonight. But I think it gives an unfair advantage to certain candidates over others, and I want you to consider this idea. Let people vote by mail. If the reason for this is out of health concerns, send every registered voter in the city of Kennedy a mail-in ballot. It's not that difficult to do, and it's not that expensive. So please consider that as you discuss this item and vote on this item, and trust you all to do what's right for this community and what's fair to everyone who wants to serve this community. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nothing.
Item number six, official statement from Kennedy City Manager William, providing current status of COVID-19 matters. Movement?
Make a motion to consider item six on the agenda.
Second. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, esteemed city council. Before I get into the official statement, I received some information earlier today on the number of cases within the state of Texas and counties throughout Texas, and I want to give that number to those in the audience, to the council and the mayor tonight. The state of Texas currently has 194 confirmed cases. Bear County has 29 of those. Coe-Maw has two. DeWitt has one. Kendall has one. Labaca has one. Medina has one. So that makes up to 194 cases in our region that we have that we deal with. So just to let you all know where we are, it's my understanding to which one of our neighboring counties, the Carons County, so it is knocking on our doors. As I begin tonight, I first want to thank each and every one of you. I realize how short notice this was to get you all here today, and we're so thankful that our governor has enabled us the opportunity to be able to do things like this, and we will certainly address certain things as we go on through tonight as to why exactly this meeting was exactly called, and some of these items were not postponed until the regular meeting that we would have on April 14. With that being said, honorable mayor, esteemed counselors, valued staff, and cherished residents, I would like to take this moment to thank each of you for your cooperation, dedication, patience, perseverance, and willingness to pull together during this time. It is no secret that since SARS-CoV-2, also known as COVID-19, was first detected in December of 2019, that the way in which we here in America transacted life has changed dramatically. From January 2020 through today, we as Americans have been exposed to ominous-sounding terminology and swift actions of federal, state, county, and local officials. These actions, while restrictive, are designed to create gaps in the gestation cycle of the COVID-19 virus. The underpinning ideology is that if we limit contact, we by default limit exposure and thereby begin to reduce the risk of the virus spreading and exacerbating the current state with which we currently reside. In 1809, to a group of Maryland Republicans, Thomas Jefferson stated, "The care of human life and happiness and not their destruction is the first and only objective of good government." Today, those words have never run truer. Government owes a duty to its constituents to protect them from imminent threats to their health as well as their freedoms. Since March 13th, 2020, we have witnessed government doing just that, protecting our health. First President Trump issued his proclamation declaring a national emergency regarding COVID-19. Moments after that, Governor Abbott issued his proclamation declaring the same. Both of these proclamations were designed to draw attention to the seriousness of COVID-19 and its ability to spread rapidly. Additionally, through this proclamation, President Trump effectively created a shortcut to necessary funds that could be dispersed to states to aid them in combating the spreading of this virus, funds for responders, medical personnel, and health and human services desperately needed. As many other states immediately jumped to issue declarations of public health disasters, Governor Abbott, through his team, monitored the spreading of the virus through Texas. And only after careful consideration and prayer for the safety of all Texans, on March 19th, 2020, he issued Executive Order Number GA-08 relating to COVID-19 preparedness and mitigation. Having followed the model of our governor, we have carefully monitored the movements of COVID-19 virus and have explored all options at our disposal as to what the best course of action would be to protect our cherished residents. Andrew Jackson once said, "When the time for action arrives, stop thinking and go in." This is what we have done here in Kennedy. On March 13th, 2020, we closed our city park to better protect our children from potential exposure. While City Hall is fully operational, we did take measures to limit exposure to our staff. We set aside all late fees and water disconnects for non-payment until April 14th, when we will review the situation and adjust our decision as needed. We canceled all committee meetings so as not to jeopardize those residents serving the city on committees, and we canceled show cause court for the protection of the court clerk, judge, and those needing to appear. We did all of this, and still were able to remain fully functional at City Hall. The city's manager's office has remained open to talk during these times. Our police department continued full-force patrolling. The fire department service remained uninterrupted, and our public works crews were diligently performing their daily tasks with no interruption. In short, we were still here to serve our residents. Tonight, we are here to serve our residents still. However, due to the recent executive order by Governor Abbott, we must transition to the next level. This transition exists only for the safety and welfare of our cherished residents and their health and welfare. Every action we take is temporary and will dissolve when the gubernatorial, executive order and presidential orders expire. Franklin D. Roosevelt sums it up pretty succinctly. "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself. We do not need to be in fear over any of the events that transpired, as there is nothing to fear." We do, however, need to respect the severity of COVID-19, though we do not need to fear, and there is a difference. Other than the actions the government body will undertake tonight, actions that can be taken to help reduce the likelihood of the virus spreading are as follows. Avoid mass gatherings of 10 or more people. Skip the handshake. Stay six feet apart from others. Limit travel to essential trips, i.e. the work, grocery store, or the doctor. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. Stay at home when you're sick. Cover your cough or sneeze, prefer it with a tissue or your ventilator. Wash your hands with soap and water with a good lather for at least 20 seconds. Disinfect and clean frequently touched objects within your household with a disinfectant. Most importantly, if you feel sick or have any symptoms, seek out medical attention immediately. The common symptoms that usually appear within 2 to 14 days after exposure are fever, cough, shortness of breath, persistent pain or pressure in the chest, new confusion or inability to arouse, blueish lips or face. Once again, we'd like to thank you for your patience and cooperation in this regard. Remember, we are all in this together, and together, God will bring the substance. Respectfully submitted, City Manager William.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven, discussion, a mayoral declaration of local state of disaster due to public health emergency.
I'm going to motion reconsidering item seven.
I'll second. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and declare a state of disaster for the city of Kennedy. Whereas being in December 2019, a novel coronavirus, now designated SARS-CoV-2, which causes the disease COVID-19, has been declared a global pandemic by the World Health Organization. And whereas the symptoms of COVID-19 can range from mild to severe illness and cause further complications, including health, and whereas COVID-19 virus mainly spreads between people who are in close contact with one another due respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes, and whereas on March 13th, 2020, the governor of the state of Texas issued proclamation certifying that COVID-19 poses an imminent threat of disaster in the state and declaring a state of disaster for all counties in Texas. And whereas March 19th, 2020, the Texas Department of State Health Services determined that COVID-19 represent a public health disaster within the meaning chapter of 81 of the Texas Health and Safety Code. And whereas on March 19th, 2020, the governor of the state of Texas issued Executive Order Number GA-8 relating to COVID-19 preparedness and mitigation, and whereas the city of Kennedy, Texas, is taking extraordinary measures to protect the residents of the city of Kennedy and prevent the spread of this potentially devastating disease in our community. And whereas said state of disaster requires that certain emergency protective measures be taken pursuant to the Texas Disaster Act of 1975 relating to emergency management and public health pursuant to Chapter 418 of the Texas Government Code. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Kennedy, Texas, Section 1, that a local state of disaster for public health emergency is hereby declared for the city of Kennedy, Texas pursuant to Section 418-108A of the Texas Government Code. Section 2, that pursuant to Section 418-108B of the Texas Government Code, the state of disaster for public health emergency shall continue for a period of not more than seven days from the date of this declaration unless continued or renewed by the city council of the city of Kennedy, Texas. Section 3, that pursuant to Section 418-108C of the Texas Government Code, this declaration of local state of disaster for public health emergency shall be given prompt in general publicity and shall be filed promptly with the city secretary. Section 4, that pursuant to Section 418-108D of the Texas Government Code, the declaration of local state of disaster activates the city of Kennedy, Texas Emergency Management Plan and authorizes the furnishing of aid and assistance under the declaration. Section 5, that this declaration authorizes the city to take any actions necessary to promote health and suppress the virus, including the quarantine of persons and occupied structures, examining and regulating hospitals, regulating ingress and egress from the city, regulating ingress and egress to occupied structures, establishments of quarantine stations, emergency hospitals, and other hospitals, and nursing compliance for those who do not comply with the city's rules pursuant to Section 122.006 of Health and Safety Code. Section 6, that this declaration accordance with Executive Order Number GA-08, I'm sorry, GA-08 issued by Governor Abbott on March 19th, 2020 hereby limits the size of gatherings to not more than 10 people and mandates cancellations of all such gatherings until further notice. A gathering refers generally to scheduled event or common endeavor where 10 persons are present in a confined space, room, or area. Section 7, that this declaration in accordance with Executive Order Number GA-08 issued by Governor Abbott on March 19th, 2020, further mandates people shall avoid eating or drinking at bars, restaurants, and food courts, or visiting gyms, massage parlors, arcades, or any game room or game room establishment as defined in Ordinance 19-3 of the city of Kennedy's ordinances, provided, however, that the use of drive-through, pickup, or delivery options is allowed and highly encouraged throughout the duration of the Executive Order GA-08 issued by Governor Abbott on March 19th, 2020. Section 8, that this declaration in accordance with Executive Order Number GA-08 issued by Governor Abbott on March 19th, 2020, further mandates people shall not visit nursing homes or retirement or long-term care facilities unless to provide critical assistance. Section 9, in accordance with Texas Government Code 418-173, a person who knowingly or intentionally violates this declaration commits an offense punishable by a fine no less than $500 per occurrence and up to $1,000 per occurrence, or confinement in jail for a term that does not exceed 180 days. Section 10, that this declaration hereby authorizes the use of all lawful available enforcement tools. Section 11, that this declaration shall take effect at 11:59 PM, March 20th, 2020, after its issuance, declared this 20th day of March, 2020. There you go. Item number 8, consideration of possible action in regard to Ordinance 20-01, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Kennedy, Texas postponing the general election to be held on the second day of May, 2020, for the purpose of electing an at-large mayor, one city council member for single-member district number 2, and one city council member for single-member district number 4, to the November 3rd, 2020, uniform election date, designating polling places, authorizing the executive execution, and providing for other matters relating to the November 3rd, 2020 election, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Any movement?
Make a motion and discuss item number 8.
I'll second.
Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, the mayor, this is directly related to Governor Abbott's March 18th issuance pursuant to his governor powers in the state of Texas. He's made the proclamation to suspend Sections 41.0052A and B of the Texas Election Code and Section 49.103 of the Texas Water Code to allow political subdivisions, which a municipality is, to make the decision whether or not to move their election from May 2nd to November the 3rd. So we do have the full faith and authority of the governor behind us in this particular matter. So we have, that's listed in there as attachment, as Exhibit A. Exhibit B on this item right here is also going to be of note. The other thing that allows us to enable to do this is the mayor's declaration of emergency that he just issued. Those two things notwithstanding, we would not be able to do this. So because those two things are now in place, the council may legally consider moving the election.
Any movement?
I'll make a motion if we consider item 8 on the agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I read Governor Abbott's proclamation, and he was recommending that that was something that be considered, also in his talk on the TV the other day. That was something that he was saying, and cities, they should consider it, because to really hold an election where you're telling people you can't have more than 10 people at a gathering, you're going to have three election booths or four election booths, you're going to have three or four people there that's collecting the information, and you're going to have people that's going to try to get there to vote, that's going to stand in line, that goes against everything that we say we're trying to do to keep people from being safe. Our early voting starts, and we have to do this before our early voting starts. Early voting starts next month. This is March, so early voting starts in April. That's just where we at right now.
Have you considered doing mail-in ballots to not just the senior citizens or people who are abroad or halfway at college?
Who are you asking?
Well, the council that are smarting back to Leslie.
Counselor Meyer, that's not an option. Mail-in ballots are only available to a select group of people, and you have to follow within the parameters of that select group. If that had been an option, Governor Abbott would have included that in his proclamation.
I had spoke with the elections administrator, and I think it is an option. It's going to create more work for her, but I believe it is an option.
I thought there was criteria that you had to be of a certain age, you had to have a certificate, there was a criteria on that form.
Can I call her?
In this meeting?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, she had, we had discussed it, because she had told me this on the.
I usually defer to the secretary of state and the governor on all matters regarding this. I usually do not defer to county election officials. The reason I don't do that is historically, while they do get paid to make sure these things run right, there's been numerous times where their information has crossed the information coming from the state, and when push comes to shove, the state always overrules. So I always tend to defer to our elected officials and Austin on these things, and this is where we are with this. Had Governor, I'm certain Governor Abbott did consider these things, but the actual ordinance that is in front of us was written by our attorneys, which they did their due diligence and all this as well, and it does not provide for this matter whatsoever. So, and had, had it been an option, other municipalities would have already gone with it. But what's driving this right now is that we did receive a telephone call from the election office here in Carons County, and she only had one question for us. It wasn't, do we want to go to mail-in ballots? It was, are you moving your election to November, or are you not? So since she asked that question like that, that's off the table. It's we move it or we don't.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Okay. Early voting begins April 20th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And today's date is?
The 20th, the 20th.
So there's a whole month to decide this issue.
No, sir. She called us and told us she wanted our answer by Wednesday next week.
Because of programming, she needed to know.
Was there any reason it can't be decided Tuesday next week?
Actually, Mr. Baker, I was going to put this on the agenda for our regular meeting on April the 14th, so I wanted to wait until the regular meeting to deal with this. But with this individual calling us and wanting this answer, this is where it's at tonight.
As you see, there's almost no one here, and a lot of the candidates are probably not even aware of this meeting, so they're not being given the opportunity to speak to this topic and be heard on. I just think it would be more fair to postpone the decision if at all possible.
That's up to the governing bodies, not my call.
Discussion.
Are we canceling everything we have scheduled?
We will discuss future events probably at our regular meeting that have yet to come up yet. We're not, we're not discussing those right now. We have to stay with what's on this agenda because this is emergency day.
I understand that, but I'll just ask a question.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn, are you aware of any other surrounding areas that have, before this meeting, tried to move any of the elections to November?
I am not, not in our surrounding area. It was actually something that took me by surprise with the elections, people calling us. I really thought we would have more time to do more due diligence than this. And I must add that while Counselor Winn is correct in what he says he heard from the governor, it's important to understand the transparency here. The governor is recommending this. He is not mandating.
He's not mandated.
But we, as a government body, need to address it, and since the elections board wants to know so quickly, the sooner the better. That way, we can move on.
I think community safety is first priority. You know, look at what's happening right now at Walmart HEB, and we're having to wait 10 people at a time at the HEB right now. I mean, how can we tell our people that it's okay to come vote with a gathering of 20 or more, and we can't at HEB? So I think top priority is the people here in Kennedy, keeping everybody safe.
I agree, Counselor.
I agree with Brenda that public safety is our first priority. However, HEB is not going to close. Walmart's not going to close, that we know of, and they're, you know, letting only so many people. I guess I haven't been that way. I think they're only letting so many people at a time.
They are only letting 10 people at a time.
There's a huge line in the morning, 7:00 AM. There's a line on the road.
Every time I've been by HEB in the last two days, it's a line outside.
And you're right, they're not closing.
They're not closing. But that's, that's part of what the, what the, what they had said, what President Trump said today. The grocery stores are going to be open, and they're going to keep moving product into the grocery store so that things are available. But they highly, highly, highly encourage people to follow the mandates and not to, the restaurants, downtown San Antonio is a ghost town. The restaurants are closed, the bars are closed, and that's going to have to, that's going to happen here. And there are, the National Guard has been activated. My son's in the National Guard, and the reason they activated him is because the reality is, this is serious, and if we can't do what's necessary to protect ourselves, the federal government will help us protect ourselves, and Governor Abbott will help us protect ourselves. We won't like the way they do it, but they will get it done, because this is a situation that is bigger than these five people going to ever be.
It is, but I just, I can't, I mean, just my opinion only, I don't.
I see.
I know it's two, it's a month away, like a month and a half away, and I understand that, but.
But they've canceled things that are months away now already.
Yeah, fiasco. They canceled fiasco.
Yeah, I understand that.
School's been canceled. Other.
Schools closed to the 31st.
Tea festivals been canceled. I mean, there's lots of things that have already been canceled that are months away because they're anticipating.
Yes, please.
I understand that.
Counselor, may I address your statement real quick, please? The difference between a grocery store and an election is very simply this. You have a Walmart Supercenter up here on the hill, which is approximately about 55,000 square foot, okay? You have an HEB down here, which is probably about 65,000 to 70,000 square foot. You have an election building in here, which is probably right around 8,000 square foot. The key phrase is close proximity, okay? The more people you have in close proximity, the less opportunity they have to get to six-foot distance to let the, if someone sneezes, it goes and comes, it won't, you know, transfer, okay? Whereas in those bigger places, you're letting in 10, even 15 people at a time, there's opportunity for them to stay six feet away. So that's why this is happening this way, and that's why we're looking to address this like this. It's, you know, if we had an 80,000-square-foot building to hold our elections in, I'm almost very certain we'd be having this discussion, okay? But we don't.
Well, I understand that, but okay, we have a, you know, square-foot building, but you only have three booths at a time, four maybe. You can contain the number of people you keep in the room, and it's really going to be up to the voter whether they choose to come out or not.
That is, that is correct, but if we stay with the May election, then we stay with the May election rules. And if we stay with the May election rules, a lot of people who could vote maybe in November who won't come out to vote in May won't get to vote because they don't qualify for the ballots by mail.
And I just want to say, I stand corrected. You are correct. I reached out to her, and it's, you can't do it across the board, mail-in ballots. So I just want to. I just wanna clarify that real quick.
Thank you. And, and just to, just to springboard off of that, by moving it, all the people who've already done ABBM, right now, that's over and done, they gotta redo, and we'll have to reorder the election as we get closer, so we'll have to redo all of that. So all of this is doing, this is just saying, as a governing body, this is what we desire to do for the protection of our residents, and we still have to go through all of that. It won't change anything with the candidates who are running or anything, they're all locked in, nobody else can join the race, it is what it is.
What's the difference in voter turnout between the May and November election?
Huge, usually. Usually, usually many more people will turn out in November than will come out in May, simply because they're voting for county, state, federal things, and so everybody wants to come out and vote, so, you know, it's actually more optimal to do that. There's actually provision in the government code that enables the municipality once every four years by ordinance to do that permanently, but that's not a discussion for tonight. The thing is, we're discussing this tonight for the better safety of our community.
And this, this is just, this is just going to be the dates, but not necessarily the location, correct?
That is correct, we're actually gonna do it still here, in, in this building, because the city secretary called the election people to make sure that they were gonna have enough booths to do, and they are gonna have enough booths for us to hold it here, so yes, sir. The answer to your question is yes.
So that's, and I, and I, that's the only thing that makes me a little bit nervous, is because you're gonna have to have people go into two separate places to vote.
Right.
So you're gonna have to convince people to go vote for county, state, other higher-up entities at a polling place, whereas then they'll have to come back here to vote city. I just want that to be clarified, I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, just so everybody understands.
So if I go vote?
If you go vote for president, whoever you want to vote for president, you'll have to go to your polling place election day.
For me, that's here, so all of mine will be here.
But not everybody.
That's not all of Kennedy.
Yeah, I would have to vote over them and come here.
But May 2nd, all of Kennedy is here.
If it, if it was here, then yes, it would be here.
No, I'm saying if you're.
It would be the only election going on. There aren't polling places for the, the city, well, there's not multiple polling places for the city elections, it's all held here.
So all districts vote here?
Yes, if, if it were, if it was, well, yes.
In May.
If you're trying to vote for president, or county attorney, or whatever, you would have to go to your polling place, so it's two separate.
And it's hard enough that we don't get the people to come out for elections right now, much less to get them to shoot people.
When they're scared to come out and vote because they're afraid to get sued.
You're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get many people that's gonna come out in May. I mean, that's just, that's just the reality. You know, we shouldn't be out of stuff at HEB, because every, every person that has talked have said, there's no shortage of food, there's no shortage of supplies, we're continuing to ship it, we're continuing to do it, but that didn't help, that didn't change a thing. And if you think people are gonna be, feel any different come May, and we don't have an answer to where we're at, I'm not gonna come stand around with a bunch of folks to, to vote, and, and most of you won't either. I mean, you guys are, you guys are not excited about getting out in the public right now, and we don't have a case here yet. I'm not nervous about it or scared about it, it's just the reality. We have a virus that we don't have a cure for that is killing people, and we have an obligation to our citizens to do what's best for them all the time. Counselor Meyer, may I speak? I just wanna just say, it is, but it's only at-risk people, high-risk people. It's, it's healthy, normal, average Americans are not falling, it's the elderly or those that have health issues and things like that. Today, when President Trump spoke, and the lady that from CDC and the guy from National Health Organization, they made it clear, and the mayor of California or New York, when he spoke, they made it clear, we've got some, we've got some young people in the hospital that are critical now, some twenty and thirty-year-olds, and a lot of them are under sixty. They may have underlying health problems that we don't know about, but we need to, if, we've gotta get back to this and, and look at this, and I certainly can appreciate your position on that, but the, the issue is, in front of us, is whether or not you all wish to do this.
I'm not for moving the election, I think we just leave it in May, and if you want to come out and vote, you're gonna come out and vote. It's an important election, and I think people, I, I mean, hopefully will, you know, at least be halfway through this and, you know, coming on the, the other side of it, but I, I think if you really wanna vote, you'll come out and vote, you'll early vote, mail-in ballots.
Let the old yellin' ballots.
Christian mail-in ballots of the people that tell us.
Yeah, but, that's just my opinion.
I don't think people will come out to risk their health, but that's just my thought.
Any other discussion? If, if we went ahead and went with the May, decided to go with May, hold it in May, the governor says, you know what, we're shutting down the state of Texas, what happens then?
They won't win the election? Yeah.
Do they win by default, or do they push, does it automatically just get pushed over to November?
Okay, so when you have an election, what you have is you have a group of people running and vying for a spot, okay? And then the residents say A or B, okay? Then you have to canvass the votes, and then that person has to be confirmed, they have to, they have to be confirmed for their seat. So what you have, if the, if the governor shuts it all down, you have nobody being confirmed. In the cases where nobody's ever confirmed, the presiding officer states, yes. And that's straight from the Secretary of State's office.
Pretty good and get to.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call over.
Is there a motion on the table?
What is the motion on the table? Consider impossible act in regard to ordinance 20-21?
Yeah, that's it. Motion's already been made in second, that's how we enter discussion.
If you'd like to make another motion, I'll entertain that.
Don't make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we keep the elections scheduled for May 2nd, 2020.
I'll second that.
Discussion. If you're gonna come vote, it's, the vote, the vote numbers here in Kennedy are proving that they're not high, and come November, there's still, there might be a few more people that'll come out in November than.
It's not about the number.
Yeah, I know, it's about the health too, but like, he spoke, he said it's the, it's the upper-aged people that are being affected, the young ones, and if you have health, respiratory issues, it's, it's, the, the ones at risk, and if you're healthy, it's, it's really not affecting many people, and it's, it's spread out there, it's spread out there. I, I worked with a lot of people, we worked the front lines with these people that come from all, all these different places, and we're. So should I withdraw this pro, this declaration of disaster, or should I do that right now? Should the county do that? I mean, 'cause if you want everybody to continue business like they have been, we're glad to just let everybody continue business.
If the motion's in May, and you don't, you're ready to vote?
We still have a discussion. I mean, that's, that's, that's the order, that's how it goes.
Would, or would it hurt to table this a few more days till, till Tuesday?
She doesn't need to know until Wednesday.
She doesn't need to vote till Wednesday, Tuesday?
To answer your question, Counselor, it would not hurt to table this, okay? Till Tuesday. The only thing is, we're gonna, we'll have to draw up an, an agenda tomorrow to hit the seventy-two-hour mark, okay? With the fact of what we had on the agenda here tonight, this was allowed to be on this agenda because it tied right into the emergency stuff we were doing. And again, the Carons County was the one that actually pushed this for us. So the question I would ask you, Councilman, is if we table this until Tuesday night, what's to say any action happens Tuesday night or doesn't happen Tuesday night? What's to say one of you all forbid comes down COVID-19 to a new level? We are here tonight, and I think that it is more prudent for us to deal with the items at hand tonight. However, you are the governing body, it is your decision what to do, not mine. I only bring it to you to say, this is what I think. If you want my personal opinion, I'll give it to you. If you want my professional opinion, I'll give it to you.
What's your professional opinion?
My professional opinion is, we are doing a disservice to the residents of our community if we do not move this to November. That is my professional opinion, and that is the opinion that each and every city manager that I run with will share. That is the opinion of the governor of the state of Texas. That is why he pulled this on the table. However, it is not my job to make this decision. This is the one thing I can't do. I think it should be moved. I mean, if Governor Abbott, I mean, Governor Abbott has done a great job for Texas, and if he thinks this is something that needs to be looked at, we need to look at it. And we need to understand that Governor Abbott is trying to do what's best for the state of Texas, and we are part of the state of Texas, you know? And we're saying we want to do this because we don't think it should move, we don't know what tomorrow is gonna bring.
You mean, you're right, we don't know what tomorrow brings, but he didn't actually, he didn't tell us we had to move it, it's giving us the choice.
Well, President Trump didn't say we had to do anything either, but that's why President Abbott activated the National Guards, because there will come a time where you don't get to have a say, because you didn't make the right decision. Now, if you don't, people don't understand that, I'm sorry, but that's the reality. They have a job to protect us, even when we're not smart enough to protect ourselves, and they're going to do that, because they're responsible, he's responsible for the state of Texas, and the president is responsible for all of the United States. And they applauded those areas that have already did that, closed their borders to anybody, you can't not leave or enter California, Illinois, New York City. I mean, that's the reality. We're in a, we're in a situation we've never been in before, we're looking at something we've never looked at before, and we don't know the answers.
Personally, I'd like, I'd like it in May. I, I can't go against what the governor says, I wasn't gonna say a word about this because I am a party to this thing. No matter what I say tonight, I'm gonna be accused. Immediately, I was accused here tonight. You know, this is my idea, this isn't my idea. You guys have to have good government, you have to provide good government, whatever it is that you think is good government, please provide that tonight. I understand you want me gone in May, that's fine, I want the election in May, if that helps you, okay? But we're sitting here making declarations, people are losing their jobs, people are dying, and we're up here because of our personal feelings about this person or that person on an election. Make the decision, whatever it is that you want to do, but we have to serve the people.
And we actually do, and, and this, you know, personal agenda is, nothing could be further from the truth, unless you know me, then you can say it, but you don't.
It has nothing to do with personal tax, has nothing to do with work. Okay, you, one question in November, okay, let's look at the prop picture. This seems to be getting worse by the day, if that's the way you look at it. Who's to say come November, no one can leave to go vote, when they have the opportunity here on May 2nd to vote?
And then it would be up to the governor to figure out how that's gonna be, how that's gonna take place.
Yes, please.
Counselor Rams, it's, you know, your, your statement is, is very well accurate. What hap, gestation cycle of this virus is only between two and fourteen days, most people show symptoms within five days, okay? The quicker and swifter you act today, the less likelihood of down the road it being any worse. What we're trying to do as, or let me rephrase this, what the president and the governor are trying to do, is they are trying to take this cycle, and they're trying to create blah, cuts in, in the circle, okay? If you think of a circle, a circle is completely perpetual, has no beginning, no end, and that's what's going on today in our nation. We have a perpetual circle of this virus spreading. What the president and the governor are trying to do is they're trying to create breaks in that circle. The more breaks you can create, the quicker you can create those breaks, the greater the likelihood that it gives, one, the CDC and the WHO enough time to create vaccines, okay? It gives time for this thing to die. And those are two very important things. So the actions we take today benefit the greater good in the future. It's kinda like, you know, what would you rather do? Would you rather go out and, you know, buy one fish from HEB and eat one fish a day? Or would you rather learn how to fish so you can self-sustain yourself forever? That's kinda like what we're doing here. We're trying to quit eating one fish today, and we're trying to break this cycle now, while it's small, get a grip on it while it is able to be contained, before it gets out of hand. The only reason they ever use the word pandemic, and let's be clear about this, the only reason they use the word pandemic is because there's cases all over the world, and that's, you know, the word pandemic is all-encompassing. It's an ominous word, but it's not like there's billions of cases, there's not. There's only two hundred thousand cases worldwide, worldwide. There's seven billion people in the world. That's not even, that's not even one percent of the population. But if we get a grip today, when it's small, we can protect everybody. And that was one of the things I said to everybody in my interview, if you remember. I will always push you all in the direction that is for the greater good of our municipality, not for the greater good of one person or a group of people. I would not bring this to the table if I didn't think it was for the greater good of the municipality.
And the recovery rate versus the.
Depending, depending on age and health. The younger you are, the healthier you are. There are people out there, i- i- if, if you'd like to know, there are people out there today who are healthy as an ox, not showing any symptoms, that are carriers of this virus. So the question of the day is, who in this room is a carrier? Me? You? We don't know. And if you or I are a carrier, and we go and we interact with somebody tonight, when we leave this council chambers who has a weakened immune system, and they get it, what's their life gonna be like? It's got to be the greater good, but again, I don't make this decision, guys. And Councilman, just sidebar, you and I have had some discussions before. You might wanna consider that as well.
Is there any other discussion? What's the motion on the floor?
What do you think, Mr.?
To keep the May 2nd election. And then Counselor Sine second that motion.
Any other?
Can we withdraw, can we withdraw that motion table till Tuesday?
You can withdraw this motion, you can withdraw.
You can withdraw the motion.
I actually withdraw my motion.
Okay, so what is the new motion? Anyone have a new motion? What are we gonna do about this, guys?
I think we need to, I think we need to take that, take the action to move it to November 3rd.
Is that your move?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I just feel that if we have a few more days to see what's. I just feel that if we have a few more days to see what's happening, we'll have a better broad, better perspective of what to do come, come Tuesday when we get that meeting. And so, looking at tonight, and just going by the numbers that we have tonight.
Number 100.
That's, that's all, that's all I'm saying, I know the numbers are going up, but to see the rapid pace, if it does somehow slow down here, we're taking things day by day, we're taking for granted that, yes, it's going to explode, but it's just hearsay, let's see...
No, we're not, I don't think anybody's saying it's going to explode, but we're saying...
But that's what I'm saying.
That it's going to continue to perpetuate forward, it's, it's still on the upward climb right now instead of the downward climb, because we... We haven't taken the necessary actions to help people understand the importance of not being out, not doing the things, not being within the six-foot, because there are still people out on the beach playing right now that thinks it's okay.
What are we doing Tuesday for our meeting? Have we come up with a plan?
If the council wants to table this until Tuesday...
No, no, I want to know, are we having a meeting in here after that, after that declaration? Is there a meeting in here Tuesday?
Friday, that would be the meeting, seven days from today for the council to extend the declaration.
You're saying we'll be a teleconference or we will be...
Right.
Uh, at this point in time, it would probably be a teleconference.
Is there any other discussion? Does everyone understand the motion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Counselor Brennan? What was the motion?
The motion is to have it in November.
Counselor Brennan?
Where's November?
No.
Counselor Wood?
Yes.
Counselor Sines? Uh, no. Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, guys. Motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
There's my paperwork, Amanda, thank you, guys.
I can do anything, thank you.
Okay.